I thought it was a waterfall there.
I thought it was dude.
I don't know where it was coming from.
I'm trying to create the best atmosphere for y'all.
Before everybody's gonna have to use this one, I don't know.
I'll kick myself out before we did it.
Sounded like nice waterfall for a nice zen feeling. Okay, at this time I need to, uh, call for additions or deletions to the agenda.
Eleven A.
Eleven A, okay, we'll mark eleven A for deletion. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. The boys made a motion, all in favor? Mark the stand, that's unanimous. This time we have presentations. First is, uh, for the Sun Valley Marketplace, which is, uh, Mr. Moser. As a reminder, presentations are subject to technical limitations.
Thank you.
Okay, will do. Uh, Mr. Mayor, good evening. My name is John Rawson, Eagle Engineering. Uh, also here with me this evening are Mr. Dennis Moser and Ms. McKenzie Moser. We're at the 2013 Van Buren Avenue, there at 231 Post Office Drive here in Indian Trail. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor again and members of the council for allowing us a few moments to discuss the Sun Valley Marketplace mixed-use development. Um, our purpose here tonight is to provide an overview of the previously submitted, uh, mixed-use zoning and to secure a level of interest, uh, or level of support from the council with the project that we move forward through the zoning process. Uh, I'm gonna speak from over here, hopefully everybody can hear. Uh, if you're okay, I'll, I'll knock. Okay, for the recording. Thank you. Uh, the property is sixty-two acres located off Highway seventy-four, Westy Chapel Stouts Road. Uh, this is the Lowe's Home Improvement Center, uh, and this petition was actually submitted back in two thousand and thirteen, uh, for a mixed-use development. Um, the current zoning of the site, shown in purple here, uh, is Regional Business District. Um, our goal was to, again, do a mixed-use development, so we were requesting a conditionally-zoned piece of property. Um, to summarize to date, uh, in late two thousand and thirteen, we submitted a petition to rezon, uh, from RVD to the conditionally-zoned land unit development, uh, for the town's consideration. Uh, the next slide will give just a general overview of our vision at that point in time. Uh, multifamily component to it, a retail component to it, uh, restaurants, retail, commercial uses along both frontages, potential for medical or assisted living facilities within the development. Um, sorry for rushing through this, Mr. Mayor, but I'm trying to be considerate of your time constraints here. Um, in the plan development process, we did full evaluation of utilities, we did site surveying, uh, we did traffic engineering, we used the consultant who is actually currently, uh, the design engineer of record for the Super Street project and all of our traffic study analysis. Um, and concurrent with the technical review of this plan, there was interest secured from the YMCA of Greater Charlotte to consider a regional YMCA facility. Uh, as a result of that, next slide please, uh, there were multiple reiterations worked of this site plan showing, uh, a seventy thousand square foot YMCA facility and incorporating that again into the mixed-use design. Um, a hotel facility, restaurants, retail, again, along on both frontages, there is indeed a multifamily component to it, uh, the potential for, uh, a medical use or a storage use against the railroad tracks. Um, again, we, I'm gonna flip through a couple slides here, a few slides, multiple iterations, uh, to get to the one that we think was most consistent with the vision. Um, next slide please, uh, the rendering of the proposed YMCA facility, the, uh, the development team, uh, secured a design expert who had designed actually several of the wives in the Greater Charlotte area, and they worked with us to develop, uh, the statement of architectural integrity. Next slide please, um, the multifamily component, that same architectural integrity carried through, uh, to what was being proposed as multifamily components. Next please. Again. And I think one more and one more here. Okay, so this is the concept plan that, uh, was generally settled on. Um, dates that are being proposed are literally four years beyond what it was. We essentially projected out, uh, that the entire development would now work between twenty nineteen and probably twenty twenty-two, uh, to bring each of the components onboard, still maintaining the YMCA facility with athletic fields, potential hotel site, retail uses, uh, a multifamily component, uh, commercial site, retail site, water quality features. Our access points are Westy Chapel Stouts Road, uh, and what exist as access points today are through the Lowe's Home Improvement at two locations and at Alexis Point. Uh, there has been discussion about a potential access, uh, through the frontage onto seventy-four that has not been completed, uh, at this point in time. Um, again, uh, points of access, we talked about, uh, the traffic, uh, consultant, DRMP, uh, has been working with us, the same folks that did the, uh, uh, the Super Street project. So, what is different now than four years ago? This Super Street is under construction, uh, there are commitments made, there are improvements being finalized for Westy Chapel Stouts Road, there's been a traffic signal warrant analysis conducted, uh, at that access point. Um, for all of these reasons, we think that probably now as opposed to four years ago, we're at the right point, it does make a lot more sense now. And again, our purpose here this evening is just to gauge a level of interest from the council. I'm gonna turn the mic over to Mr. Moser, and he's gonna elaborate a little bit on his discussions with the line.
Thank you very much. I'm Dennis Moser, two thirty-one Post Office Drive, um, Indian Trail. Um, and that's, we're here really to see, you know, with the previous council and, uh, previous leadership in town, this is a recruitment, you know, with the YMCA. This is a, um, an opportunity that, um, can you hear me better now?
We can't hear you back here.
Okay, is it, speak.
You still have to speak louder.
Okay, alright. Well, what I'm saying is, is this is a recruitment, you know, for the YMCA. We don't have a YMCA deal or anything like that before, when we came in twenty thirteen, we did not have a YMCA. As a matter of fact, we made the proposal, we used the buses from First Baptist Indian Trail, you know, took the entire leadership aboard through YMCA around town here, you know, they're obviously looking at several different towns in Western Union County to put a YMCA. Um, and, um, my vision, you know, for the YMCA was, you know, to put together an opportunity where the, where they would come to Indian Trail. And our goal is for them to bring them to Indian Trail. And in talking to the leadership of the YMCA, this ten process typically dictates ten to fifteen years from the first vision. I first started on this in two thousand and eight. Um, my mother, you know, passed away from Alzheimer's, and what I would like to see with this YMCA, not only to the benefit of the kids in the community, start them off on the right foot, you know, add a YMCA, give them opportunities, but my vision for this YMCA would be that we have a component of it that is based on, you know, Alzheimer's for not only the Alzheimer's patient, but also the caregiver. That way, you know, there'll be a, we're a partner, you know, I've talked to a couple of the hospitals about them partnering with us, um, you know, to offer, um, an opportunity where we not only help the Alzheimer's patient and bring them there and exercise, you know, their mind and their bodies, physically, but also have a place where the caregiver can bring that person and let, you know, them, you know, exercise and let caregiver get away and have a little bit of a break, uh, also. But even thinking a little bigger than that, I think that there's an opportunity for this to be a research area, we've been partnering with the hospital and some of the colleges, that we might could one day find a cure for the Alzheimer's. So, it's a little bigger than just a YMCA, um, you know, is what my goal would be for this. Um, I'd like, you know, for us, before, when we had put down the points and the proposal to the YMCA, we had offered to give them the land, and then it's about eight million dollars to build this facility. Um, my family was gonna contribute, and I had several other members that were gonna contribute, and I was gonna raise the total eight million dollars. We offered to do that, plus, at the time, the town had offered to give them thirty acres over in the park, um, to eventually to build their fields, but temporarily use your fields for their athletic fields, park down across from Sardis. So, that was kind of, kind of what we were proposing at the time, and the Y turned it down. They didn't think that, you know, Indian Trail was ready, you know, they're working on doing the one in Waxall. Um, and, um, so what I'm here to ask is, do you have an interest, you know, obviously they're looking here, you know, up toward, you know, the styling side of McHale, you know, installings, other areas. Do you have an interest in us together partnering and trying to bring a YMCA to Indian Trail? Um, if so, you know, we need to all get together, meet and figure out a plan on how we're gonna, you know, make this process work. The Y has been doing everything on their end and starting, you know, the smaller little wives here and there and the, uh, exercise groups and building up their membership where they think one day they can go into this facility and we, um, build it, raise the money, get on the land and turn it over to them, that they can, um, make a profit. You know, it's gonna draw a lot from their system, which is very profitable, but they've got other wives throughout their system that are not profitable. So, it's, uh, this is only an opportunity, we're here to make this presentation as an opportunity for the town. Um, so, from the Y standpoint, that's our only aspect. And in order to do, do that, we have to have something in order, you know, with the multifamily. We've looked at every option, with the hotel, with the retail, um, you know, we have to have something there to bring the folks in, you know, and something there that we can make a profit at, you know, as well. We've been, we've had this land for a long time, um, we, um, have been, you know, paying taxes on it, we love the opportunity to develop it, we're just here to seek your guidance. I think we've got eight different versions of plans that we would like to sit down with you and see what direction would you like to get. That's all we're here at. So, thank you very much for your time.
Sure, I was gonna talk about the apartment aspect, aspect. Two minutes? Okay. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and I'm excited to talk to you about, uh, Sun Valley Marketplace. Just like they said, with, along with the retail and the hotel and the YMCA, there's also plans that we would like to see for multifamily. There's a huge need in Indian Trail for a place where younger people like myself should be able to go. The current apartments are at ninety percent, uh, occupancy rate, which in itself shows the need for more, and we just had hired five new employees, and they're here tonight, graduated from Citadel NC State, and all of them are having to live elsewhere because there's nowhere affordable for them to live in Indian Trail. So, a huge desire for our generation is to have livable and walkable mixed-use communities, and you see this being a success all over. So, just minutes away, you see Waverly, um, and then the higher density areas, um, leading to more residents who are within comfortable walking distances of services and increases willingness to walk instead of drive. So, we would like to see the apartment aspect as well, so there's people, or there's places for the younger generation, and not just the younger generation, but anyone who wants to live in a maintenance-free, um, walkable environment to go. So, thank you. You're also guessing, Mr. Moser, you'd like to see a gauge council interest on a future meeting with them, uh, working with staff, and, uh, although this is a presentation...
Can we make comments?
This was a presentation that we're seeking if you want to go forward talking with them. So, we're gonna need a consensus here.
Well, I can make a comment, why can't I make a comment? You know, sorry. You know, a lot of, um, a lot of different ideas that were floating around, like a hotel over there by the Sun Valley Theater aspect, and of course, that wasn't the right location, you know, and that was obvious. And then, you know, there were some homes that were gonna be built down the street from where that hotel was potentially gonna be on Old Monroe Road. You know, this is the perfect location, I think, for something like this. I mean, it's right there on, um, um, Independence Boulevard, Highway seventy-four, where the speed streets are going in to move traffic along quickly. Not only that, there's the study that we've just done on expanding Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. Lastly, also, is you have the bypass. So, that bypass, when I sat on the Charlotte Regional Transportation Board, was built to pull a lot of that tractor-trailer traffic that you see on Highway seventy-four. You know, it's a, it's a straight connectivity from the east to the west, you know, where they can just hop on four eighty-five, just there in Stallings. So, I just, and then, you know, we'll have multi-purpose paths all along this, this, um, corridor there on seventy-four, so, and then you think about the hotel, you know, Chestnut Square Park is right down the street, where now people have to find housing or hotels for tournaments and things like that someplace else. Um, these apartments, are they grade A apartments, what are the price points?
It's class A, yes.
Class A, what are the price points? Theoretically?
A dollar ten to a dollar twenty per square foot.
Okay, yeah. So, so, some, a development that would add and increase anybody's property value, I think, living in Indian Trail, especially with the YMCA there. So, and you know, I know a lot of people don't wanna see a lot of things happen here, but if you do think smartly, because what's gonna happen is, you know, I, I remember talking to somebody who has been in the Charlotte area for a long time, and on Highway fifty-one and Providence Road, there was a gas station there and nothing else. We live outside a major metropolitan city, it's gonna grow, and if we don't take advantage of things like this, there may be another council that comes in that decides that they just wanna put, um, fast food chains all along there. I think we need to be very smart with our decisions, and this is, I think, a good project for that location.
Yeah, just when I was, had the privilege to look at the plan a couple years ago, um, I was forward for a lot of reasons. One, if we were ready for a hotel, um, the Y is to bring jobs and will bring people into the area, which will be good for businesses surrounding the area. And we also talked about, um, adding a business park, which I was worried for, because I felt at the time we had enough jobs for my daughter and my son, who wanted some jobs for me. And, uh, and I hope that's the same thing that we're gonna be talking about on the meat on this project, of that, the same thing, a professional business park, uh, hotel and the Y. I think it's a great idea, because as, as Mr. Savoyan mentioned, a lot of people are not, not familiar with the Monroe bypass, so that's gonna bring competition for Indian Trail, because you're gonna, you're not gonna have Winged and Mooresville, they're gonna be easily accessible to get to Charlotte in five or ten minutes, so that property's gonna be accessible. So, we have to take an opportunity, seize it, and realize that's it. If we wait, that opportunity will be gone. And I think we have, people want amenities, 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 and amenities drives up your property value, and property value makes everybody happy. And that's what we have to look at, is, we don't know what the next council may wanna vote on, but this is the plan that was looked at, that's gonna be looked at by this council, but it was the previous council who was voting for, because it was a plus for Indian Trail. And that's what we have to look at, what's best as a whole for Indian Trail. And like I said, it still contains what I looked at years ago, I'm, I'm all for it.
This is a good location, and I agree with you as far as the position, uh, close to the road. We didn't let the hotel over on, uh, Old Monroe Road, we said it needed to be on seventy-four. There's parts of this I like and parts that I don't, but I would be willing to sit down with a group and listen and, uh, to some more information and find out and have some questions and approach it, but, you know, it's the one I, but, um, I'm, I'm interested in how much of the graduate leave or young students are getting out of school. They can always go back and go to that, but...
Well, you know, like these four or five that we've hired recent, or in the past year or two, um, the, uh, they're living in South End, um, they're living in South Park, they're living in all those areas that have these amenities that we're wanting to put here. What I'm, is currently buying, um, a condo with the YMCA on the bottom floor, I mean, how do you compete with that, with restaurants everywhere? You know, I wanna be able to compete here in town for this next generation of residents, for this next generation of employees. I want them to want to live here where we work and where we, you know, where their, you know, offices are. They're not willing to do that right now, and that's what we've got to change.
Oh, again, I agree with you, I would like to sit down and go in with this, a little bit more of that discussion.
No, I mean, it looks like, uh, you know, something good for the town. It, um, have, have you ever thought about condos or townhomes opposed to apartments? Is that ever...
That's what I'm here to, hear how you...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's just a thought, it, it's not my, it's not my land, it's not my money, so, but, I mean, it's a, it's a thought that, that's, that, you know, like, maybe see some ownership of, of some, uh, homes. Um, uh, you know, the Super Street will be done, and like Gary said, it'll be, it'll be a really good, good place to put, you know, it's a good location for it. Um, the one thing, and you do, uh, and Dennis, I, I like this idea, and I think it would be crazy not to sit down and talk about it and look at all the different versions that you have and, and come up with the best version, and, you know, it, it, and it's your land and your money, uh, so, basically, you're gonna wanna do what's best for the town and best for you. But, um, there is a certain percentage of the town, oddly enough, I, I, as I'm walking and come over here today, this was on the news, on Channel Nine, and I, it kinda surprised me, and I was like, stopped, and it was like, I guess she was out here, uh, talking, so I was listening to some of what the residents had to say, and, uh, you know, of course, it's not all positive, you had negative, and, and one of the things that I think this town has to do, and something that a council has to talk about too, is figure out what it really wants. Does it, does, does the town of Indian Trail wanna do something like this, or does the town of Indian Trail wanna be a bedroom community? Or does it wanna be a, a, a community that, that maybe doesn't have the high traffic volume, it doesn't have a, a lot of the things, because I, I hear both sides of it. But, I'm willing to sit down, talk to you, and, and, and it looks like a, a fun place to live, I mean, you know, an exciting, some excitement.
And one thing too, in how, that we'll talk about in this meeting, is a great partnership between this, is the, the main concerns I see and hear are about the traffic. And if you look back at the traffic improvements in history that have been made, and we did the Lowe's and the QT, between those two projects there in the other corner, we put about one point six million dollars into that intersection to make all that fly, many curd and other storm drains and all that, down in Sun Valley. You know, if you remember, you guys put in two hundred thousand, and then we put in another two and a half million, and then we got money from the state. So, all the money that's built any major roads recently in town have been because of projects like this. This project will be no different. You ought to see the traffic study, which packed and showed you the road improvements that are envisioned with this project. This is the solution for you to get all of those complaints about the traffic off. You know, we're part of that solution, we're built part of, we don't mind paying our part of that. And, um, so, um, you know, that's real dollars that you don't have to spend to get these roads to prove much care. So, that's where I see that it's a win-win. It may not be exactly what you want, you know, as far as use, you know, maybe apartments instead of condo, or maybe a mixture, or may have, you know, office in similar industrial or, you know, something like that, um, you know, maybe an entrepreneur incubator like we're doing in the radiator industrial apartment you guys just approved a couple weeks ago. You know, we're looking to partner with one of the local colleges, oh, that's gonna be amazing, they need to grow, you know, these businesses from small square footages up to larger businesses, and, and like these young folks, you know, if we can get them here in town and get them loving Indian Trail and have a passion for Indian Trail, then they're gonna buy here, wanna live here and raise their kids here, wanna use the parks, and they're gonna want to eat the restaurants, and, you know, it's the same philosophy. You know, we gotta get this young generation to want to live here in Indian Trail, and that's how we partner to get there. So, thank you very much, folks, for your time, appreciate it.
Patrick, would you arrange a date for a meeting for the Miracle League?
Happy to do that. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Branson.
It's my slide.
Make a better door than a window.
Alright. Good?
I'm not gonna take up too much time. Good evening, Mayor, Council, thank you. I'm just gonna do a quick introduction and kinda tell you, we've been working with, with Mr. Graves and the Miracle League staff. We had a meeting two weeks ago to kinda focus on the playground build that came off of, um, his project, so that we could expedite that process through the grant we were funded. So, we're working on the design for the playground, um, while he focuses on just the build itself. And with that being said, we've been meeting on a regular basis to get updates from him, and then also to showcase the land and make sure that the land is looking, um, perfect for his potential donors that are coming out. And with that being said, I'm just gonna turn it over. If anyone had any questions, we're either one, I'm just staying up here as well.
Okay, so...
This is just an update, we're not going back.
You can do clip note versions of how you got here.
Okay.
For those that are in the audience, that may not be...
Can we put the video up, please?
They just tell me, um...
Yeah, that'll do it.
Is this box here that you are...
Yeah.
Pathway to the...
That one right here. This one right here.
Thank you.
And then, that right here.
Miracle League of San Diego is a non-profit organization that provides the opportunity for disabled athletes to play baseball on a team in one or next league. Nice ball.
Hey, oh, Harrison, try it, down to third base line.
Come on, let's go, jump the bat, let's go, come on, come on, come on, come on.
She gets wild when you throw home, okay?
This is Kyle Lyberdick, that's what we're called.
Before, we expert him into Miracle League, uh, we used to watch, uh, ballgames on TV, and, uh, one day my wife, uh, found out about Miracle League, and, uh, you know, would cross her fingers, and he, he got in, and, uh, he's just had a ball ever since. He's very intense, he takes us at bats very seriously. He strives to get a homerun every time he's at home plate, he's just a great outlet for him.
Right here, come on, there he goes. Miracle League of San Diego is very unique in that all of our players are paired with buddies. Buddies are really the most important aspect of what we do, because it's what differentiates us from other baseball leagues. The relationships, the perceptions that are changing, and the level of confidence in not only our players and our buddies, but our volunteers, that will all come together to do good things to benefit our community.
We have some awesome buddies and we make some awesome friends. Everyone gets something out of it. If, um, the world was like this, everybody wins, everybody gets a homerun, it would be a nicer place. It's just, like, nobody even come out here and not have a great time.
Alrighty, we can get back to the slideshow. I'm trying to meet the mayor's fine constraints. Um, my name's David Pace, I'm president of Miracle League of Indian Trail. The last several years, we've been trying to build a fully accessible ball field. Um, when I was on council, Andy here stood right here with a... When I was on council, Andy here stood right here with her son Matt. And we're getting ready to open the park, and she said, "One thing that changed my life. Where's Matt gonna play?" And what's that? She said, "I know where he's gonna go, the bathroom. I know where he's gonna get a drink of water." You gotta do that, it's the law. Where's Matt gonna play ball? It's a hard decision. Okay. So, as you can see, a Miracle League field is a fully rubberized, completely smooth field. Next. So, the idea, when you talk to somebody that has children with special needs, is don't tuck them away in a corner. Give them someplace where they can play with other kids. So, this field is going to be in Crook Creek Park. All right? Next. So, that's when the Miracle League was created. There's like three hundred of these fields nationwide. The video that you saw was from San Diego. So, they're nationwide, they started in Atlanta. Go ahead, next slide. Right now, Matt, I'm the adult wheelchair softball league. They have to play in Mollville. That's the nearest field. They practice in the bus parking lot, that's Artis Elementary. And if the ball goes up in the grass, Andy has to go shag it for them. I think we can do better. Okay, next. So, we established the Miracle League of Indian Trail. We got incorporated, we're a five oh one C three, all of that good stuff. So, a Miracle League field is only a hundred foot long. Matt and his players can knock that over the fence every time. If you want an adult field, it has to be two hundred feet. And that's what the adult wheelchair league requires. The Miracle League, everybody's safe, everybody's having a good time. It gives the parents a chance to play, watch your children play because of the buddy system. And it's not competitive. The adult wheelchair softball league is one of the most competitive things you've ever seen in your life. They will come out of that chair to take, they got no problem doing that. There's a World Series, there, all of that. All right? So, that's why there's two kinds of fields we're talking about this evening. Next. All right, so the Carolina Storm, that's Matt's team. They're here, they're practicing here, they just don't have a place to play. And so, why should we do it? We got the great spot, it's destiny, or in my language, God instance. Next. So, that's the Crook Creek Field, or Park, if you've ever been there. This is four fields right here. Right here is where they have the outdoor gym, where three of the facilities right now are already wheelchair accessible. The field would be right there. Then the little gray boxes next to that would be a bathroom and a playground. All right, next. So, the playground, the field's only half the, half the battle force. You also want a fully accessible ball field, or a playground. The playground through some grants are gonna, it should be coming up in this year. Sometimes, and I don't, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but if you get your elected officials involved that can make stuff happen. Out of parade two, three years ago, I went up to Dean Art and said, "Listen, the state isn't doing anything for these kids." And he put money in the budget, three million dollars, for grants. So, by us bringing that up to Mr. Art, not only is Indian Trail getting a playground, but a bunch of other towns are getting a playground as well. Okay, next. So, we estimated the cost of a million dollars. We estimated the playground at around three hundred thousand. So, to build the field, a basic field, we could probably do it for three hundred fifty thousand. But that would be a kid's field. And I still can't look at Andy in the eye and say, "Where's your son gonna play?" So, we're gonna do the bigger field. These fields have to be fully rubberized. You know, if you've ever been on a ball field, the farther you go out, farther those lines go out. So, it's not twice as much rubber, it's three times as much rubber. Okay? So, we've been fundraising, and we're at a point now, as soon as I get a... What do we call that, a concept drawing, Jay? Yeah, a concept drawing, where you guys will have your playground there. Well, it's all your playground, it's gonna be your field. But the location of the playground, location of the bathrooms, the location of all the power lines, the water lines, we're at that point now. Then I have my construction manual from the Miracle League, and I can go and find an architect and figure out exactly where that field has to go. Because right now, I'm getting a lot of interest in what's called in-kind donations. A construction company, I got a guy right now, ready to pour concrete. You know what I mean? I just took him to the field, and he's ready to pour concrete. You know, if he's willing to do the concrete for this whole project, that's a lot of money. Right? And I gotta slow him down. Carlos, hang on, we're doing it, we're doing it. Well, we gotta do all the permitting, you know, all this stuff. So, the town's been very supportive. And we're starting to get corporate sponsors and all that other stuff. I just got approached by a hamburger franchise. They did the naming rights, which is two hundred fifty thousand dollars, for the Kerry field. And they're interested in possibly doing a similar donation for us. So, we're in good shape. Art, next slide. The payers, I don't care if I have all them, if somebody wants to, write me a check for a million bucks, I'll take it, clearly, I will. But the payers are a hundred bucks, the big ones are two hundred bucks. Am I gonna make the money, build this on the payers? No. Right? But it will allow the teams, the leagues, to keep going. And it will give everyone in this room, because I ain't got a million bucks laying around either. I'll put a paver in there, and I own part of that field. And that's the feeling that we've always wanted to do. This is a, not a Indian Trail project, not a union county project. You know, the question is, if you had a son in a wheelchair, how far would you drive for you to play ball? Clearly, the answer is Mollville, South Carolina. Right? So, it's a regional thing. Next. Okay, and then, other sponsorship activity, so ahead, next. So, here's our timeline. We would love for you guys, you used guys being down, to start your playground anytime now. We're throwing up our signs to say, "Future home of, us left lockdown." Once you guys lock down where the playground is, then we can lock down everything else, and we can start working on this thing. We have every intention, I went to a meeting with Miracle League, and I got permission to start playing before we build the field. So, I can have play on a regular field for two to three years. So, I have every intention, spring we're thinking, right? Doing a small little league, couple, couple of teams, get it all going and that kind of stuff. Setbacks, over the last year or two, this is supposed to be a stats update. Kathy Higgins had a grandson. Dang, you won't believe what a big setback that is. She was the secretary of the corporation. She did all the emails and correspondence and all that other stuff. Some reason, she'd rather play with her grandson, okay, I get that. The other thing is, their coach, Bob Green, he was the coach for the Carolina Storm, and he was the coach for the Rolling Hornets, passed away about six months ago. He was my mentor, my friend, and my guy in the chair. Every time I come up with what, well, surely, he's PM for... Every time we come up with what we thought was a good idea, Bob would say, "Well, what about this, and what about that? How wide the doors need to be," and all that other stuff. So, I reached out, and Andy and Matt are gonna build Bob's shoes for us. So, we're in good shape, we're ready to go. I need some in-kind donations. Anybody got a fence company that would love to have their name plastered over this thing? If, what else we need? We need lights, we need the P A system, you know, all of that stuff. But that's where we're at. In-kind donations from primarily construction companies. But they're coming, they're coming quicker. Yes, sir.
How about an, have a spot in our newsletter to kinda let folks know, kind of, you know, where you are and, kind of potentially, how people can assist out there.
Sure, sure.
I think, you know, solicitation like that could really help you with not only donations, but also bodies that could assist.
Right, yeah. That's a great idea. The next slide. That's our website, that's our phone number. You can ask me, you can ask Matt, you can ask Andy, you can ask anybody that's wearing one of our pins, Miracle League pins. Yeah, we're trying to do a newsletter. We used to do them once a quarter, and then Kathy had a grandson. Now, I'm lucky to get about twice a year. If anybody has a Kathy laying around that I can use, I could really appreciate that. Probably more than the donation, maybe putting in the town newsletter will help you. Right, yeah. Any other questions?
If you just give me a percentage that they, you know, and getting a million dollars, how much is that? Would you say, yeah, fifty percent, thirty percent?
Probably, well, if this last burger thing comes through, it would be like a seventy-five percent. But, you know, they gotta take in front of their grants and all that. But seeing they did the naming rights for a Miracle League already, it's not really hard to convince that grant people that what you do will help for... Yes, sir?
Golf simulator.
Okay. You got, you got, you got somebody for me to holler?
No, I just, maybe, maybe we can do something else.
Yeah, perfect. I still have a lot of great comments about our golf tournament, if you ever wanna do that again.
But that's kinda what I was getting at.
Okay, perfect. So, anyway, Andy, Matt, Karen is our treasurer. So, if they had any questions, we'll probably be outside, get Matt going and that kind of stuff. Feel free to come out and ask, we're hanging out for a while. Thank you.